Started everyone. Welcome. Uh, let me do the call. Nancy Becker.
Here.
Ronnie Bill. Larry Cox. Here. Um.
Um, he has to leave. He's got a lot of things to do.
Okay. Um. Carolyn Cowan. Carolyn here. Laura Duff.
Here.
Joyce Edelman.
Here.
Maggie Faulkner.
Here.
Um, Vicki Green. Merna Harris.
Here.
Doctor Jeff Ex.
Here.
Uh, Judy Johansson's on the way. Billy Kennedy. Michael Lavender. Here. Pat McGinnis.
Here.
Marsha Tiplin.
Here.
Judy Poe. Mandy Stone.
She's here.
Duncan Sumter. And, uh, Charles Bynum. We have four.
We have three comments. Short comments.
Four comments. Other comment, everybody, about the assignment. Mr. Jerry Rice. Other comment.
Will you understand that?
Yes. Right there is good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your report. It's always a pleasure to come. Uh. As always, kids are on my mind. That's what I do mostly is have kids in the family. And, uh. I've been evaluating some things over the last year. And, you know, I always think about what the CEO says about doing with his money the best he can before he's got. And I ain't gonna say that he is not doing that. But I think there's a bigger problem. When you see the state of North Carolina, the emergency room is full. And you see DSS crammed full across the state. When you see the juvenile justice is crammed full. Then you see the school system putting out all kinds of crime records and all kinds of statistics on kids. That don't look good. We've got a big problem. And I don't think it's being exposed like it should. The problem I'm running into and even Mission Hospital at the emergency room and all these others we talked about today at the highest rate per capita in the state of North Carolina. That's my understanding of what I heard today at Mission Hospital taking them into the emergency room or not getting in. Whatever. My concern is, are we doing enough or are we doing the right thing? We might be doing a lot that isn't the right thing. Because the parents that I deal with, they're not getting to see their provider. They're having to postpone it two or three weeks. The parent gets in to talk. Then the provider will see the child in July. Now, when you start hearing these things throughout all the counties that I travel, to me, it's a big red flag. And to me, I think this board needs to be dealing with this. And it needs to be dealt with and not just talked about. So, when I talk about school, I'm talking about issues that you need to deal with. Because when it comes to the doctors, when it comes to behavioral health, don't think you're not getting it first. You're getting it before the school gets it. You're getting it five years earlier. So, I'm trying to be calm and give you the little global shot is what I'm telling you. But this is a lot more serious than what is coming out at this board meeting. And I think we need some substance about how to deal with this. We don't have, we've got a lot of providers. But when you can't get in the door and when they're leaving the crisis center with a bag of medicine, you can't get appointment to get to see a doctor for six weeks or whenever, nine weeks, or maybe never, to me, that's serious. We can't treat people with medicines expect to cure the problem. Thank you, I'll read it.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. And by the minutes, uh, we go ahead and one. Uh, if everyone had a chance to review the agenda and also thank you for reviewing the minutes. If so, is there a motion to approve both? If you have a motion, there's a. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. opposed? All right, Ms. Dallas. Um, okay, uh, our next item. Mandy Stone. Shelley Horn.
Tracy gave me her.
Shelley?
Yes.
Can we introduce someone first?
Sure. Hi, well, first of all, some of you have noticed my name has changed to Jill Knight. And thanks for remembering that. Also, I'd like to introduce Ray Ratliff down in the Reg. New Executive Assistant Administration who's replaced Tommy Duncan, who has transitioned to a position in Provider Network. And Ray comes to us with the great skills and experience and personal qualities. We're very grateful to have her help us and she'll be helping us here with the board and the emergency rooms. Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Okay, Shelley.
I hope I'm okay here. If I stand back here, I can't see very well and with my eyesight, I need to be able to see what I'm doing. Um, first of all, um, I would like to thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes of your time tonight. Um, sometimes the work you do in our department, um, is that really, you see it and you care about it, but it's really done in support of, of the whole organization. Um, Planning and Public Affairs Department really focuses on media outreach and supporting all of our communication for the organization. Supporting administration and state and local government relationships through information sharing and learning events. We have publications that we regularly send, um, monthly newsletters trying to keep people informed um, through work with the County Commission Advisory Council, trying to help people understand what we do. And then supporting Brian and his team in any local events that we need to, to have for our legislative delegation or county commissioners such as our Medicaid waiver anniversary celebration. Build consistent organizational branding and messaging. One of the things I think that we've been really successful with in this last year is, and it's really important for an organization the size of Smokey. And we've had really good, really great support from administration, is building consistency. So, when you see the Smokey Mountain logo, when you see something that's being published for Smokey Mountain, it looks the same. We have the same messages. We're working with staff to make sure that anything that they hand out is on an approved template. So that everything that goes out from Smokey begins and has started looking very professional, very consistent, and has a graphic standard that we really adhere to. Um, the other thing, one of the other things we do is support the communications and printed material needs of Smokey. Um, we've been very successful in the last year in reaching out and doing a lot of specialized publications for some of our programs, whether it's the, um, the Crisis and Emergency Room Initiative, which helps people learn how to get crisis care in places other than the emergency room, um, special programs on peer support. We really work with our department to produce a whole variety of publications. Um, one of the other things we work to do through our media outreach, and you'll see we have monthly articles in, in the newspapers across the 23 counties, either about special programs or initiatives, but also we do a lot to cultivate education and awareness about the disability areas we serve. Um, this last month, we did an article we sent out to papers on autism awareness, um, this month. And, and May, we'll be focusing on identifying issues related to, um, adult mental health for May, which is Mental Health Alert this month, as well as Child Mental Health Week. So, one of our goals is to help people better understand how they can recognize some of the signs and symptoms. And we do that through the promotional materials we produce, through things we put in News You Can Use, as well as monthly articles. Um, one of the things that we're beginning to do, um, we have just brought on a new staff person named Allison Edman, um, who will be working to coordinate website content management and begin social media, again, to promote awareness, health activation, and information. Um, as you know, more and more people really use digital media. They go to websites versus looking at a piece of paper, or they go to Facebook or other social media venues. So, um, Smokey's been really supportive in us having the staff to do that. Robert's, uh, staff has done a great job around managing the website, but we've really started to recognize it as a communication tool. So, we're really gonna focus on improving the redesign and the design of the website and making it more user-friendly and having information that's accessible to people. And then the last thing, we just started doing this last month, is producing our Provider Communication Bulletins. Um, the Provider Network Department, um, has information that they need to share regularly with our network of providers. And in order to make sure that that information is clear and concise and sent out in the most accurate and graphically pleasing way as possible, we've started doing that as well. Again, this is just sort of an overview of some of the things that we do. Um, related to promoting Smokey image and brand, um, our goal, to ensure that Smokey materials are professional, consistent, unified, and have a clear vision of our organizational position, interests, and public image. We do work a lot in making sure that everything we say or do, um, sounds the same. We have a lot of great departments that are out in the community and we work with them in producing, um, book materials, talking points, provide them with information that helps them have a clear message in talking about Smokey. Um, the other thing we have done is really work to promote the brand. And again, that's in printed materials, online materials, and everything we do. Um, News You Can Use Newsletter. This is a newsletter that goes out monthly. Um, we really work to email this to community members. Um, we have a large mailing list of community stakeholders and we like to promote, um, the activities that Smokey has going on, trainings we have going on, news about community partners, special initiatives, and general awareness issues. We also include state-level news in that. We have a message from, uh, Brian in the newsletter, as well as Craig does a wonderful, uh, column for us every month. And we really love to produce this newsletter. This is just sort of a glimpse of the Provider Communication Bulletin. We're very excited. We've had some issues and challenges with providers actually reading the information that had been sent to them in the past by sort of improving the graphics of it and the information that we've included. Our first bulletin had an open rate of 44 percent, which is twice the industry standard and significantly higher than it had been in the past. So, we're really excited for that improvement because we actually want our providers to read the information we're sending out. Um, this is a new production, it's called The Claims Corner. This is something that Fred and his staff produce, is focused on claims and eligibility enrollment, which is very technical information and changes a lot and it's really important for providers to have. So, this is a new newsletter that just started this month. It had an open rate of 54 percent and we were very, very excited because this is the kind of information that helps providers get paid. So, if you wanna know why it's important, it helps us be in good business relationship with our providers and it helps assist them in doing the functions that they need to do to get paid, which is important. Um, promotional.
How are you measuring the?
Pardon? We use a program called Constant Contact. It's a, um, it's a software program that tells us not only who the newsletter is going to, it tells us how many people opened it, how many people forwarded it. I mean, we can actually tell if they opened the newsletter.
Opened the email with it or opened?
The, the actual publication. Yeah, it goes out where you, if you open it, it's like, um, you get News You Can Use, it's the same way. It comes to you in its full form, so. So, you don't have to click a second time to get the information. Promotional materials, again, this is anything from brochures, handbooks, um, working on templates and PowerPoint presentation templates, anything that people need to help their materials look as professional as possible. One of the things we're really working on is helping support the use of health literacy and plain language in all of our materials. And that's really to help all of our consumers and families better understand the issues that they're dealing with with their mental health or, um, addiction issue or developmental disability, so they can make better, more informed choices about their healthcare. And this is something we'll be working on much more in the future. And hopefully, we talked earlier today, maybe get CPAC involved in doing a, a really big, um, health activation campaign. So, these are just some samples of recent brochures and publications. Supporting state and local government relationships, really local government at this point. Um, although we will support and help Brian plan any kinds of activities we want. But we do send our News You Can Use and any of our email newsletters go to our legislative delegation, to all of our county commissioners and county managers, because we think that's one way that they can keep informed about what we do. If there are special events that need to be organized that we can help with, um, the I Service, a liaison, and we support the County Commissioner Advisory Council, which is, um, a very, um, activity I enjoy very much and have started getting out and meeting with some of those members and their county managers. Um, and then just offer formal and informal updates as we're out and about in the communities. Media outreach, this is something that's grown tremendously in this last year. We have made a concentrated effort to really make sure we have a consistent presence in the media. And one way we do that is by making sure that we provide them with information they ask for, information they can use, and help interview, help them set up interviews with people about particular programs. So, press releases, news alerts, we do a lot even to help support training activities. We send out alerts to all the papers for training that's happening in the community, so people know and can attend, and doing them paid advertisements. Media accomplishments in 2014. Um, nearly 80 articles were featured in 2014 in the local media. And Brian, he was quoted 21 times, um, as of a few months ago, yes. And, um, we had, in circulation, our articles reached 1.1 million Western North Carolina residents. So, that is really quite an accomplishment. And I have to say thank you to Rick, because Alexander County actually has the, um, they rank the highest in publishing the press releases we send and following up on interviews. So, thank you, Rick, we appreciate it. Actually, Craig just went out to Alexander, no, Allegheny. You were in Allegheny or Alexander County?
No.
Alexander County last week doing, um, a piece, they did a video of Craig talking about, um, mental health issues for Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, so, again, uh, print, digital, Mountain Express, North Carolina Health News, Carolina Public Press. Topics are general informational and awareness, every, you know, activities, as well as special programs like the C3 and 356. We've got a lot of great coverage on that. Um, the My Strength Partnership, which is the phone app that consumers and families can use to help give them information about their diagnosis, um, doing things around the training for crisis response and CIT. So, we've gotten a lot of great coverage. Um, one of the things that we're most proud of is we finally have gotten, uh, WLOS to come to cover us. So, Brian actually has had two segments on WLOS for C3 and 356 and has had two interviews. And we have had really good promotion of this particular initiative and it hasn't even started. So, we look forward to that coming. Um, what's coming up in 2015, again, Robert's staff has done a great job with the website, but what we found is that with no one person managing it, really, everybody's managing it and not always in a consistent way. So, our department is going to begin doing all the content management and working to improve not only the information and design on the website, but helping the information be more accessible and easier to find for individuals. Um, we're also working to engage in the world of social media. Um, Facebook will be our first endeavor. Before we implement Facebook, obviously, we have some behind-the-scenes work to do about the rules and regulations and how we manage that and what the processes are, um, and really look forward to that. And related to especially digital media, we met with a really wonderful company on video production last week and we really hope we can sort of move into the world of doing some really neat videos, whether it's an About Us video or special videos for programs that we have that we want people to connect with, because we know that one-on-one video, personal kind of approach works very, very well. So, those are just some of the things that we do. Um, again, the website design, really trying to improve and make the website more user-friendly and focusing on social media. All of these efforts are really to, one, promote what we do at Smokey, promote the work of, of our staff and our programs and supporting the work of our Provider Network, as well as really helping people have information about the disability areas to be served. And our goal in the future is to more and more promote health activation, which is really about providing people information in a way that allows them to make better choices about their healthcare and to relate the things they're doing in their physical health and behavioral health. So, that's a very quick overview.
I want a question, Shelley. In terms of the, uh, press releases that go out, what percentage of those press releases are on a specific topic as opposed to?
An overall?
An overall?
We're mixing it up. I would say last year, we're, in this upcoming year, we're doing like a 50-50 mix. We will have an, or, and we're trying to do a monthly article, um, if, about a program or a service. And it could be either focused on a region or 23 counties or one county. And we would send that versus the, the whole distribution, like the C3 and 356, that did, that press release went out to everyone. The articles we do around awareness days, awareness activities that look about, uh, to, about signs, symptoms, how to treat, how to recognize, those go out to all 23 counties. But more and more, we're trying to target, um, articles to counties. So, if they're doing a CIT training in a county, we do a press release about the success of that, that training. So, we're mixing it up with the overall 23 county releases to the county or regional-specific events that are happening. And supporting the community education team and really talking about what they're doing.
Thank you. Reason I, reason I ask that is because my observation has been that, that we do, they tend to, um, print more specific articles than they do the general articles. Because reception, for example, in, um, like their library has a quote "library corner."
Uh huh, uh huh.
And that, that's more general. But otherwise, almost every print is more specific. And if it's completely written for them.
That, that's one of the reasons we've really diversified this year. One of our, we just had a, a really great press release in McDowell County on the program Jenny and her team have there. Um, the other thing we do is even for the articles that are more general in nature, we offer them. We, we say, if you'd like to hear more about what's happening in your community, we can set up interviews. We've had multiple interviews with different counties about maybe a general topic, but then focusing on what's happening in their county.
Do you go out and set up booths and help fairs like, and maybe like the Mountain State Fair? And I'd like to see y'all at Tom Johnson's Relay for Life in McDowell County with a booth.
Well, actually, we produce a lot of the materials and the displays and we help people do that. But it's the community collaboration staff, through the community education team that gets out and does that. We work very closely with them. We actually meet with them monthly to say, what do you need, what can we help you with, what can we produce for you? But there's a very large staff that is, um, out in the community. But if you do have ideas, we're happy to pass them on to Jenny and her team.
Well, the Mountain State Fair and the Mountain State, I wanna go to that.
Great, Great Light for Life, uh, in McDowell County.
I think they do help, yeah. Yeah, I mean, really, Brian, you need to, I mean, you guys make a list for him and, um, you know, Jenny's staff, they're out and about everywhere. And they, they have the information and displays to do that kind of thing.
Shelley, um, first of all, thanks. This is really impressive. It's a really robust, you know, systems, uh, processes and initiatives. I've, I have three questions.
Okay.
Um, the first one is, uh, has, uh, if this happens, just remind me, has Smokey had a kind of a perception survey done recently? Have you checked the data, uh, recently? And my second question is, the, uh, are these processes, I mean, this is really impressive. These processes are memorialized and policy and process, around consistency of brand image, the way you feel about stuff?
Most, we, we do have policies, yes. We have policies and procedures, especially around the printed and external communication materials. We have, um, a policy around our health literacy, the health, you know, health activation efforts. We, we also, we are in the process of working to develop a policy for, um, Facebook as well as video use. So, yes, we have a lot of processes and procedures, how people do things with the communication bulletins. And as far as the survey information, um, we, our organization has recently, um, had surveys that have been, um, received from the provider surveys and their perceptions, Smokey, consumers' perceptions of, um, their providers and then the, the consumer, you know, from their perspective. What we've done, and one, one really good example of this is, um, the survey that was done where providers had some issues around communication. The whole claims bulletin was developed in response to that concern, because they needed more specific targeted information to help them be successful. So, what we try to do is, you know, we support departments. We help them be successful. So, if there are gaps or communication gaps, we try to reach out and say, how can we help you improve it? Um, another example would be just around the amount of information we produce for law enforcement officers or the community, uh, groups, agencies, that our community collaborations staff go out and hand out to people about how to get crisis care, how to avoid using the emergency room. So, that, that's in response to a need that's been identified.
That's great, very, again, really impressive. The last question I have is, do we have, is there a method in place for evaluating the effectiveness of all of these initiatives?
That is something that we are, is we, we have what's called a communication cross-functional team. And that is a cross-section of people, um, that come together from different departments. And we look at, um, both written and printed material and, uh, written, printed material needs. And we are now, well, we have a website and digital media, uh, subcommittee. We, we have begun evaluating, especially with the website, looking at what Google Analytics and some baseline data that we want to collect as part of the redesign, as far as what is it that we need, what is it we don't have. So, we, we are trying to improve those efforts and outreach.
Well, for example, the, uh, one of the goals is getting information to targeted groups.
Uh huh.
Goal number two. Tell me, uh, again, I am really impressed with this and I'm, I'm kinda curious for self.
Well, we wanted you to be. We try to make ourselves sound good. If we can't make it sound good, you know.
But tell me how we, how we assess the effectiveness of.
The targeted?
Producing, and, oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, not that one. Yeah, the one, the goal around targeted, uh, group.
I can give you a great example and it came up yesterday. Um, one of the challenges we have is helping people, especially people in our system, law enforcement officers, first responders, know what to do when someone, when they come across or are called out to do with the people, people in crisis. So, we have worked with community collaboration staff who said, if we could do like visor cards for a law enforcement officer, so every law enforcement officer has to call this number, which has our 1-800 number and the mobile crisis management team in that number, then we can help divert people more effectively. Um, I'm trying to remember the statistics, but just in Asheville, a high percentage of law enforcement officers and first responders now take consumers to Neil Dobbin's for the first assessment instead of going to the emergency room. So, that's one example of how we can target information. Now, do I think we're, we need to do a better job of measuring? Yes, I think we do. And I think that some of the efforts we're going to have around health awareness, health literacy, using plain language and health activation will really get to, are these materials leading to people asking the appropriate questions they need to ask about their own healthcare?
So, Casey, the, the, on the performance committee, where, where, like when I said, uh, we do, we do that data, uh, every month. We look at some of the areas that we're looking at, of course, which is a holy grail of effectiveness of any program is that are gonna be, you know, the crisis rate, hospitalizations, needing use, hospital readmissions. There's, there are huge variations in county to county. And so, uh, you know, any program that would be directed towards, uh, the highest utilization rates would probably be the most effective of the ones that we tell most different. rates would probably be the most effective of the ones that would tell a much difference. But I tell you, I, I mean, from month to month, there's not a lot of variation, to be honest. But I think those are the, those are the key indicators of whether or not anything that we do is successful.
We have some ideas about new materials to put in our new member packets, even though it's for Medicaid, we can try to get those out to others, as far as giving people information in our new member packets about, you know, what to do if you're in a crisis, as well as how to promote their taking more responsibility for questions they have for providers to stay out of crisis. So we're beginning to explore more and more, and my staff have begun meeting monthly with the community education team, so they can sort of connect the dots, because we have one department that's out there working on these issues, and so we need to make sure we're giving them what they need with their state hold groups.
Do you have a mechanism to track, maybe through your intake system, how people knew to come to you? Is, is there a way to do that?
Um, you know what? Um, let's see, Carla isn't here. I don't, I don't know that we...
And I don't know your system.
And I'm not sure if I, I don't want to give you a wrong answer.
I understand, and I don't know your system well enough to know.
At the call center, I know one of the things that the community collaboration staff is doing in relation to a specific population is for, is in the, the boncom in the region that will be primarily served by C3 at 356, they are actually calling people who've been to the emergency room for behavioral health crisis and asking what worked and what didn't. I'm not sure, and I will follow up with you, about if our access center, when people call, asks, you know, how they know that. But we always have a hard, I mean, you know, people don't need our number until they need our number. We put it out all over the place, so we continue to look for efforts to promote our access line.
And I'm drawing from some very old experience in a smaller organization than you have, so I don't know how your system works, but when we could, we would try to, to extract from somebody who called or somebody who's receiving a service, how would you know the caller?
That's a great idea.
Did you see us on TV? Did you see a flyer? Or did you pick something up at a health fair?
That's a really great idea.
If you, I don't know, again, if your system is too big, it might not work.
Well, it's a call log, and I don't recall that being part of the call log, but I have...
It's not, it's not the day that we...
It was a morning conference. Yeah, and I don't think it's part of, I don't think that is field in the alphabet where they log the calls, but maybe, I just don't remember the name.
We're constantly exploring, you know, how to get, especially our 1-800 number, how do you get that, you need help, call us. And so, that would be a great question to ask, or how would, you know, where do, where did you look and didn't find us, is another question, you know?
Maybe wrong, but I think that one of the key things that maybe we need to look on is, it's almost related to the old expression, put it on the ground. I, I don't think that we give as much traction actually from newspapers, for example, because the kind of consumers that may be needing our services may not be the kind of reading newspapers. I mean, yes, yes, there is a cross-section, but...
Right. And, you know, I, we totally agree, and we support that. I mean, I wish, you know, Jenny isn't here, but what I will say is, we may have a commitment, we have a whole variety of staff in her department that are focused in each county, working with agencies, organizations, planning groups. We have consumer, we have peer support and family navigators. We just did pressure for them, they're people who connect with individual consumers and families. We, we have a lot of people out in the community, and so that helps a lot in helping especially key agencies who might interface with people in crisis, give them the information they need. But it's always, you said, when people need the information, is when they need the information. So how can you help it be accessible? And one of the things we're doing with our website and social media is trying to be even more accessible. But I think that the community people make a big difference.
You've put up some new billboards, haven't you?
That was, there was a, a billboard. I, that is something I can, I, it's very expensive to have billboards, but it's something we are looking into now, again, as part of our budgeting process. I'm not sure how to turn this off.
I think one of the things, for example, that, and I don't have a specific strategy necessarily, but, you know, as many Medicaid clients as we serve, for example, you know, maybe working with ESS directors to make sure that every time, as your social worker do a Medicaid review or new intake, that maybe we had a piece that could repeat some types of services we have and ask them to handle it. Every client, either review or when they have a review, because those are the people we're serving.
Right.
I saw, I made a call with a task force to do that trip. They were just supposed to buy this company, so it was large, larger than normal, but what did happen, speaking with the administration, Amy Delonge, they were everywhere through, everyone, and they got big old stacks, both do, when they get their health crisis, ESS, the health department, all the therapists in town, everybody is at a booth, you know, and see them, and took, watched, and they, they stacked them, and that's the kind of things that...
That we do, yeah.
Yeah, just, just like you say, we go right on top of that, but...
We, we spend a lot of money. I mean, I'm very grateful, it's just, they never say, no, we can't print that. I mean, we spend a lot of money on those kinds of printed materials. But the more we can do, and I, you know, just the consistency, I can definitely pass that on, on to the community education team and have Rachel and Allison, you know, make sure they have enough stuff that they're taking to them.
It's just amazing to me, as so many clients or whatever you want to call, it's like given to us, they know their provider, they have no workday, they have no, no workday, they know, but it's almost like they get into the provider, but it's like this name right here gets dropped.
It's just, yeah.
But I think a lot of it, and I'm not saying all providers don't know, but I think a lot of them don't want them to know, they don't, because it gets, especially in a lot of rural counties, and I know Redford County, because I've talked to them down there, they 've never heard of Smokey, they don't know what Smokey is, they have no workday, they have the access to come here to make a complaint. So if you keep them in the dark, they don't have anywhere to go, so they feel very scared, not even if they would make a complaint here, because they know the aftermath, they're going to come down, down in the hills. And, you know, it's somehow, we've got to get this out in rural counties, where we are, what we are, and what we're supposed to be doing, that they don't think the only thing they've got, other resources they've got, is their provider, because they've got to be able to get past that.
You know, so, great idea. We send a new member packet to everyone who qualifies for Medicaid, and they get a lot of information about what we do, how we can help them, what information we have. We don't have that for the state kind of consumers, but we could do something where we can give packets to the community collaboration staff, for instance, to hand out more. And I think this whole health awareness and health activation is we try to help people get information about, like, what questions do I need to ask my provider? What do I do if I'm not happy? You know, just some basic information about where's the term? We can help make the facilities that.
I think that it just never ceases to amaze me when I say something without Smokey or, you know, Medicaid, and they look at me like, what in the world are you talking about? Never heard of it, don't know where it is, wouldn't know how to contact if they needed to, and it just, you know, it's really hard, but when you get a lot of these people in rural counties, they don't know.
We need to get more of the materials in New York, and so I will get with Brian Shubin and make sure our CFAC members have all of the information we're sending out with our community collaboration and other folks, TV2.
That's where it's going to get back to your rural counties.
Pardon?
That's where it's going to get back to your rural counties.
Well, we'll give you stats.
Shelley, please. Lieutenant Grant is not here to buy it.
Right.
A couple of comments about the advisory, county commissioner advisory board.
Sure.
Heard of that?
Yes, we, we, our February meeting was snowed out, just, you guys were lucky enough to have your retreat a few days later, which worked out, but, so we met in March. We had a very, I think we had a very good meeting, we had pretty good attendance. Brian did a great job of doing an overview, overview for the group of sort of the direction, possible directions that the state general assembly is taking around overall Medicaid reform. Talked a little bit about what we were doing in that regard, how we were developing partnerships in our local community. We talked a little bit about the county allocation request letter that went out, and discussed some of the changes related to mobile crisis management and hospital settings to help the commissioners and county managers understand what was happening at the, based on state rules, so if they heard things from their local hospitals, they would understand what the new rules were. One of the great things, I think, that came out of the meeting, and I've done some follow-up with those members, is we talked about trying to identify some key topics each month that would be of greatest interest to the counties, things like, you know, the crisis services continuum, things, you know, just different topics that would be of interest to them, looking at services by different providers, gaps in services, and maybe having focused topics where we would provide some background information, give them, you know, the information they would need to then have more of a discussion, and areas where there were concerns or issues, they could help build some consistency across the counties and how they were handling things or talking with their agencies and organizations. But for any of you that were at that meeting, are there things you would like to add?
Shelley, Dickie, Green asked all the commissioners and the county managers that's there, if they knew who the provider, what their provider was in their county? And most of them did not even know who, if someone called and asked you who you go to for your health, and you know.
And, you know, the only frustration I have with that is because, I mean, I don't want to be frustrated, but the meeting before, we had, the whole meeting was focused on going over, and we gave every county a list of all the providers in their county, but it did highlight that information needs to be shared multiple times. One of the things that I've been doing is starting to get back out to meet with the county manager and the county commissioner advisory council, and Donald went with me to several of those meetings where he can address what services are specific to that community. Christina has been sort of busy this month, but she said, you know, she'll come out with me if I want her to in following months. So I think that those individual connections will help just remind them, but we will make sure that information continues to get foot before them.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Shelley.
Thank you, Tracy. One more.
Our next item on the agenda is Consumer and Family Advisory Committee. Pat, yes?
Thank you. Our CFAC steering committee, we met on April the 13th in Marion at the Health Department. We had really good attendance. I was impressed, and I think everybody else was pretty much impressed, too. Tracy Hayes came and talked about the DHHS cardinal settlement agreement, and then continued planning for the CFAC annual meeting happened, and it's going to occur on the 16th of May. We also reviewed the Smokey budget and balance sheet, and the proposed CFAC budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We also heard an update from the bylaws committee. Our annual meeting will be at the Ridgefield facility from 11:00 to 3:00 on the 16th. Our agenda will include a review and a comment on the proposed Smokey budget for 2015-16, update on the DHHS cardinal settlement agreement, ACA presentation to include an overview of legislation concerning the future of Medicaid system in North Carolina. We'll also receive information on due process. And there still may be a few things, like I think Shelley's been added to the agenda, I just found out today, that our CFAC steering committee will meet again on June the 9th, and our local meetings will resume in August. But I had some opportunities. I've been going to a lot of public meetings, came to one here in Asheville, and Christina came, and, and it was real good, went to the one in Marion a month or two ago. And I went to Cherokee County, I went to Cherokee County, I guess you would call it, Murphy, which I couldn't believe the drive, but I had the opportunity to go to a, a meeting at IOI, which is, I believe it's Industrial Opportunities Incorporated, and it's, it's mostly a lot of IDD consumers, and they have a military contract where they make things like suspenders and other things. And about 70 of these consumers came to this meeting, and it was really good to get to tour that facility and get to hear their concerns, which the biggest concern they had, which is a very good thing, I guess, for mental health, was that their bowling alley had closed down due to drug dealers taking it over, and they want somebody to open their bowling valley back up. So that was, you know, and a lot of them talked about their program and how much they liked it and stuff, but it was really interesting to get to be with all those IDD consumers, and I loved it. I also went to one over there a couple hours later that day at a church, and I managed to get up and talk about CFAC and, and maybe do a little, hopefully recruit, and if Judy needs anybody in our far western counties, I, I told them all about CFAC. Of course, they were told about CFAC at the IOI facility, too, but I'm not sure many of them realize what CFAC is at the IOI facility. But at the church, the public got to learn a little bit about CFAC, and I was glad to do that. In our meeting, another thing we talked about was emergency departments and how long folks in some of our counties are waiting for a bed, and this came from me, basically hearing that Murphy, North Carolina, had had a, a long wait for someone a few months ago, and some folks wanted to talk to me about it, but, you know, we're concerned about them all over our counties. Also, I think we had a really good meeting. We talked about some of the challenges that CFAC is having, and some challenges were identified among our members. And, you know, a lot of it comes down to being and feeling valued. And Smokey has done, for the most part, a good job at making CFAC feel valued, and the members feel valued. But occasionally, there are challenges, and we did learn in this meeting, and we talked about the fact that the challenges for the CFAC members that are board members are different sometimes than the, and the supports given are different than maybe the supports for just the regular CFAC members. So we had a good meeting, we had some good discussions, we're, we're working on some things and some answers. And Nancy, do you have anything you would like to add? Or Judy, do you think, or Judy, Judy wasn't able to come to our meeting, but she may want to add something about what's going on.
Yes, the only other thing is, Tracy is going to be working on, or, bringing the relational, relational bringing, or, she's going to kind of get something together, bring it back to the community, we're going to be looking at it, so we'll be getting relational bringing, to give connection to our also responsibilities and this patient, and the need for, looking forward to getting that done, you know, great CFAC plus board, and we'll have a better idea of what tools to do the work in the absence, looking forward to doing that.
Yeah, I forgot that, but, yeah, thank you. Jenny, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I was unable to attend that meeting, based on meetings are difficult for me right now. But I, and I already mentioned, the next, the mental health task force meeting, I mean, who am I going to? And I identified myself as a CFAC member, and I spoke to people for the first time at that meeting. And I think people kind of went away from me, but, but we'll see. But Rhonda and Amy, I spoke to them afterwards, because I had some concerns about a few things going on there, and they said, it's really cool to have CFAC in the team, so I did feel supported in that, at least my spoken members. I also, today, had an opportunity, and this, I don't know whether this has to do with CFAC or not, but I gave a presentation to the MSW graduating class about grants, and really had opportunity to talk about C3, we did discuss... really had opportunity to talk about C3D, we did success, and promote that in this group of social workers, and identified the subject, and explained a little bit about what that was about. And that whole class was very receptive to CFAC. They have a total addiction specialist program, and about half of the class are involved in that substitution mental health. That was twice I got to mention CFAC in a beneficial way.
I want to add one more thing that was said at our meeting. I believe Nancy was talking about it, but the retreat was mentioned, and it was talked about the fact that felt the board members and Smokey was doing a good job offering folks on the board and other folks good trainings so that we could learn and grow in our role as board members.
Thank you, Pat. Duncan's not here, is anyone priority of a provider advisory council board? Okay. Now legal compliance, Tracy Hayes, our general counsel.
It's time for your quarterly compliance report. Jake did not be here today, so he just got me. We've had four anonymous calls to our compliance hotline since the last report. The first was an allegation that one of the providers in our network is not actually delivering the services that are being billed to Smokey. That was referred to our PI unit on April 15. The second concern, facility in our network that all the callers stated was that they were engaged in unlawful business practices. That's also been referred to our perjury unit. We had a call that one of our residential facilities phone system was down. We had a family member who was very concerned, indicated they were unable to communicate with their loved one. That was referred to provider network the same day for a high priority follow-up and was resolved the same day. And then there's been a complaint that a consumer was required to pay a provider without any form of the payment requirements upfront. That is not really a wrong abuse issue, it's been referred to our compliance team. In terms of compliance issues identified by oversight agencies, and just remember the format that we're using for this quarterly compliance report, I think I told you this before, but this is the format that's approved by the American Health Lawyers Association, and that's what our committee decided to use. All of our EQR plan of correction items were submitted on April 2nd. The URAC desktop review was completed. Additional documents are due May 15th. The URAC site visits are scheduled for July 14 through 16. The URAC grievance that I mentioned, the last meeting has been closed, and the agencies were found to be in compliance. And our Senate Bill 208 audit materials were submitted on April 17th. In terms of training, Smokey was kind enough to support myself, our security officer, George Scott, and our privacy officer all to attend the National HIPAA Summit in Washington, which I know just sounds very exciting, doesn't it? We go to Washington to talk about HIPAA. But it was a very, it was an excellent training. It included presentations from the U.S. Office for Civil Rights, which is the director general of that, who they are responsible for enforcing HIPAA, and CMS. In terms of kind of a summary, I'll just say that the training basically confirms that our privacy and security efforts are on the right track, but that we will need to implement some additional efforts, particularly around funding and staffing, to combat what is definitely an increased efforts at cyber intrusion in healthcare, just in general, you've seen all the news about the different breaches. So that's something you'll see in our budget this year. In terms of dissemination of compliance information, we added the compliance hotline and a special fraud abuse section to our Family Consumer Handbook. We continue to do, we have these weekly learning moments that Nancy Ford sends out to all staff every Monday morning, and we include privacy and security reminders in those learning moments. And then I reached out to Shelley's team to see if they can help us improve marketing of our compliance hotline and fraud abuse posters. At our last compliance meeting, we were a little concerned, we had not received any hotline reports in the months of February, March, and as soon as I said that, I got six the next day.
Just keeps saying six.
But we do, we would like to see them. I don't know, Ira, this is something you could give us some feedback on. We'd like to see them posted in county DSS offices, places like that. It's just a poster that has our hotline number where you can report Medicaid fraud and abuse related to behavioral health.
Can you, can we require our providers to post them? We offer them to them, but we require them to post?
We have not required them, but we were thinking about putting that in their contracts this year, particularly at least in our compliance care center sites, so that there at least be one place in each county where we have that.
Joyce, if you'd like to go around and see some of your old county.
Yeah.
Take a DSS tour over a span of a week or so, that go to all 23 counties and.
And Joyce, you don't think that'd be a problem?
No, I think most counties were medicated, and not a problem.
Okay. So we'll work on that.
If you've gotten problems in the past with Medicaid services, they all bill Medicaid, you might find someone who could send it out, like say, other than the provider posting. We usually get emails from other persons all the time.
Ah, that's a very good idea. We continue to perform all of our criminal background exclusion and healthcare personal registry checks. I wanted to give you guys a sense of what the scope of that is. So just for example, in the month of March, we conducted 3,092 continuous OIG verifications of providers. So this is all the practitioners in our network, all of the owners, energy employees of the agencies in our network. We have to check every month their name against the OIG exclusion list. So just, just so you kind of understand the volume. In terms of critical incidents or sentinel events, just so you know, all of this has been reported in Performance Equality Committee, but since not everyone attends that committee, we thought we would just kind of include a general overview for the full board. We had 475 level two and level three incidents reported in the first quarter of this year. A level two incident is an incident that is an action that doesn't result in permanent physical impairment or significant psychological damage. There were 391 of those reported. Level three incidents are an action that results in permanent physical impairment or significant psychological damage. And we consider a level three incident to basically meet the definition of a sentinel event, which is something the joint commission defines. And there were 84 of those incidents reported in the first quarter. They categorize them, there are categories in the incident reporting system that providers select. Out of those categories, one is allegation of abuse and electroexploitation. There were 102 incidents in that category. Deaths would be 39, and these do include deaths from natural causes, limited to death that are suspicious. 27 injuries, 11 medication errors, 172 that fall in the category of what the provider calls problematic behavior. These could be threats of suicide, sexual incidents, absences from a facility of greater than three hours. There were prospective intervention incidents reported, 19 suspensions or extinctions from facilities, none involving fire, and then four that fell into the other category. And I think I've told you this before, but just as part of our newborn member, we have a critical incidents review committee that's chaired by Dr. Martin, where we review the incident reports that are filed by the providers in our network to determine if a provider responded appropriately, and if there were actions that the provider could have taken to potentially prevent the incident. And Craig, if you want to say anything about that.
Well, that committee has a lot of work to do, and part of our challenge is for a good provider to fill out these reports completely accurately, because if they do that, then you don't have to die in prison. If it's a level three and it's a death, then there's a concern about that, our usual pattern is to, 90 days before the event, as well as before, and I'll give you the death certificate or the medical death report. And if we find something on hand that raises concerns to us, then we go to the investigating or precise committee to review and.
So that committee needs twice. In terms of significant risks facing the organization, security breach remains our largest risk. I mentioned that the next year's budget will include some additional funding requests around conducting an external HIPAA risk assessment, encrypting our mobile devices, and some staffing. We did finalize our cyber liability insurance last month, so we now have cyber liability insurance in place that will cover Smokey in the event of a breach. We have, as part of privacy and security efforts, we keep a security incident log that logs all incidents that are reported by our staff, whether it's something that has been committed by our staff, or something that's reported to us that a provider does. We had 67 incidents reported in the first quarter. None of those have been determined to constitute a breach. And we are on track to begin encrypting all emails July 1st rather than making that a staff choice. The final thing is that, I'll take that back, I have two more things. One of the, we've talked about staff safety here, so the compliance committee has developed some training recommendations, and we'll be working on that over the next quarter to implement some additional staff training around safety when they're out. And then finally, we implemented point email archiving, week of April 20th, to make sure that we're compliant with the North Carolina Public Records Act. So all Smokey emails are now being archived. It is not up to individual staff choices to whether or not to archive the email. Robert, if you want to say anything about that.
I think you've pretty much summed it up. I think it's a, it is a compliance issue, and I think the solution that we can, probably gives us the best chance for compliance, if we want to, is to write to the task board.
And then a couple of things we'll talk about in the close session. Any questions?
In respect to the incidents and those incidents that raised the way I've seen them, do you, are you of the opinion that the organization has adequate processes and policies in place and construction practices in place to hammer off those, take appropriate action? And I guess my other question is, is do we, as the board, how, can you tell us how that compares with the industry standards? The number itself seems pretty strong to me, but I, but I need context for it. So can you give us some industry compare, and then tell us about the process?
Okay. So in terms of your first question, do I think that the process we have in place is sufficient? I do. It is a very robust process. We spend several hours, twice a month, reviewing these incident reports in detail. The clinicians, had that by Dr. Martin, would do an in-depth review of the records we needed to replace them. So for example, some of the things they might be looking at are, you know, oftentimes, Dr. Martin will look at the incident report and note an anomaly related to medication, for example. Why is that particular consumer being prescribed that medication if that is the document listed for some follow-up on that? A lot of the incidents that are reported, though, really are things like natural causes. So this is, we talked about it at a previous board meeting about them. Let me describe it better. People with mental health issues, and their mortality rate is so much higher, and they're much shorter.
Mortality and mortality is 55 is closer to 75, right?
So we are seeing just a lot of deaths from natural causes, but they are at young ages from people who have a young heart, and think about that, that's a big piece of why you see such a high number, but it is natural causes, it's not, providers are still required to report this.
So it comes in as a level three because the cause of death is not certain, we do the investigation. Part of the question from a clinical perspective is could the provider do something better to help coordinate the medical care, or make sure that's integrated medical care? So oftentimes, I think it's more technical than a critical review.
So we, I get your view that there's an adequate process of performance improvement, a good feedback mechanism to deal with this information, but am I understanding that a death from natural causes is also reported as a critical incident?
It's not known sometimes at the time of the death whether it's a natural cause or not, so it goes in as a level three. And then once it gets reviewed, it can be recoded as a two.
Okay. Okay. That's very different.
So that's part of why the numbers are high. So somebody was in opioid treatment program, they've been discharged from that program for two months, and they're found dead in their home. Well, part of the question is, did they die of a drug overdose? Did they die of a heart attack? Why did they leave the opioid treatment program? All of that. So that would be what the critical review committee would study. If there was a concern about a provider function or action, then that would be filed out to be a part of our provider network file for that provider.
And part of this analysis includes training the data, looking at clusters, looking at trends, at a particular provider, it includes all that.
That is something we have recently started. Our director of personal management has kind of taken over the monitoring of all of our incidents, and so over the past several months, we've started to see those reports become trends. And hopefully, we'll be gathering that information so we can identify there's a particular provider. Yes, we have, in that committee, identified situations where, okay, we've seen this incident with a particular provider, and now we're seeing this is the exact same thing. Or sometimes what's interesting is, to give us some of our larger providers, we'll see that a particular site is doing very well in how they report the incidents and respond to them, but other sites within that same agency may not be doing as well, and so we can provide feedback to the agency of, you need to perhaps work with this person at this site who is doing a very good job of this, and have them, you know, spread out across the agency to do a better job.
We do have a nice, we also look at the, you know, we're on top of state providers who turn never reports at all, that we get very specific down, and we send you back asking why, why, why we're sending reports, or if they're very high, we're looking for breakdowns from, our base is in one county, so we even made, or made, so we even break it down, and we can look at counties, so we know how many counties where most of these are coming from, and provider why, and then we ask them, break it down, it's M I S A and U D. So we're requiring, and we wrote it down, what we're, we can see specifically where they're at.
In terms of industry standard, I would have to do more research on that, but I can get back to you with the next compliance report, do a comparison.
Is this reporting standard plus the state? Do we compare the area?
Yes. All providers across the state are required to submit incidents, and it's called IRIS, it's the state's incident response improvement system, for behavioral health providers, because it's not by the hospitals, but it's a statewide initiative.
One day you had a conference with the county, so the county rights committee here, and a lot of the other areas were shocked at what we're requiring, and have presented in our meetings that they never see, didn't have any of them in. So here, as we hold, we hold our standards for what we want to see in human rights, and other committees are now asking us to see what we're getting, so they should go back and require it, and so they're saying that here, we see a lot of, we demand a lot.
In terms of conflict of interest, if any board members have any new conflict of interest or need to report, this would include just kind of by way of channels, if you've taken on new clients or anything like that, if there potentially be providers in this network, please just let me know. Annual board training, Joe gave me a list of people who missed the annual board training. It includes two or three of you who missed it two years in a row, and it's a statutory requirement, so I'm going to follow up with those of you after the board meeting, and maybe we can just do a short, little refresher training prior to the next board meeting, like maybe 45 minutes early or something like that, so we can check that off. That's it?
Those of us that have missed it.
I could send you some counterpoints. And then you just send it back to me, sure.
At this time, we have a closing session, we have the virtualice session 113, 318, 111A, on, or, disclosure information that's critical to confidential, the virtualice 126.1, or not considered public records in the meeting of chapter 117, statute, to involve the, the attorney pursuant to the, the, the session 113, 318, 111A, and to discuss the personality of the, of the, of the. On eleven A, three, and to discuss the personality of the North Carolina Process 142, eleven A, six. Is there a motion for a closed session? There's second. All in favor? Close, okay? Report of the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee, that's so good. And then the financial reports turned up three.
Hopefully quick. There'll be two parts, actually three, in the presentation tonight. There'll be the financial statements are standard. I will brief as far as the dashboards and as per agreement with the board over a long period of time. There are amendments to the budget that periodically will occur. We bring them to the board approximately four times a year. This is one of those times that we will go through the amendments. These are required. These budget categories, management has very little latitude to change without more approval, which with each addition or reduction that is shared with the board and the budget is normally a minimum, so just in terms of process. Going to the balance sheets, the financials being reviewed are as of the end of February. Cash checking and interest accounts is at seventy-nine million. The South Carolina Capital Management Trust currently stands at about thirteen-seventy-six. The cash in the cash risk reserve, as you know, two percent of all payments received through the Medicaid program are put into a cash reserve until such time. Fifteen percent of the annual revenue that is due under the Medicaid program is received. It currently stands at sixteen point four. You will notice that accounts receivable is significantly lower this time. We received infusion in the February check write that we believe adjusts the outstanding accounts receivable claim. This is at full value of accounts receivable, so there was a nice influx of cash to resolve much of the outstanding issues. About three-one would be standard within any monthly period. Going to the liabilities, part of the balance sheet, accounts payable stands at ten point five, ten point five-six. Accounts payable IBNR under the Medicaid, approximately seventeen million dollars. I won't go through the details of the fund balance except to identify two items, and that is, what in terms of the fund balance was added since the beginning of the fiscal period, July 1st to the present as of the end of February? Under the Medicaid program, it is at the revenue over expense, eight point two million dollars, and under other funding sources at three point two nine. Questions in terms of the balance sheet? Going to the analysis of revenue and expenditures, again, this is as of the end of February. I am reviewing the fifth column of the Medicaid program, which is to the left. Revenues, on the service revenue part of the Medicaid program, stand at a hundred and seventy point eight million dollars for the period. Expenses at a hundred and sixty-six point two billion dollars with revenue over expense for the period on the service side of four point six million. On the administrative end, revenue of twenty-three million, expenses of nineteen point five million, and revenue over expense of approximately three point four million. So net on the Medicaid program only, we are talking about a revenue over expense of approximately eight point two million dollars. Moving to state and federal, going to the third column in that category. Revenue standing at thirty-eight point three million dollars, expenses at thirty-five point one. So revenue over expense of approximately three point two million dollars. On the administrative side, revenue of three point seven, expenses of approximately four million dollars. So in this case, expenses exceeded revenue by approximately three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Going to the final column for a total including all sources of funds. Total revenue for the period as of the end of February of two hundred and thirteen point two million dollars. Expenses of two hundred and five point five with revenue over expense at seven point five million. On the administrative side, twenty-seven point three, expenses at twenty-three point five with revenue over expense for the period at three point eight million. So net for all operations, revenue, state, federal, Medicaid, administrative service for the period as of the end of February, revenue over expense at eleven point five, which is approximately five point four percent of revenue received. That is high. I would never expect that to be duplicated during the balance of the period. There is one nice thing about February, and that is it's the shortest month of the year. The applicability of that is many of the services that we fund are residential. Residential is paid on a per diem basis, so February is the cheapest month. That sounds weird, but it's the truth. And it makes a significant difference as far as the financial statement for the month of February. It's an anomaly. Questions in reference to that sheet? Going to Medicaid budget versus actual. I won't go into a lot of the details of this, except there's some commonalities throughout the period of time, year to date. And that is that the Medicaid program, the B3 program in particular, is significantly under expended. And the Medicaid B program, which most of the mental health services, is significantly over expended. For a novelty, the Innovation Program, which is Medicaid Part C, is under expended for the period. However, again, this is the shortest month of the year, and those additional service states do make an anomalous difference in innovation to the month of February. Overall, on the clinical budget side, though, we are at about two point eight nine million. Questions in reference to clinical services? Ridgefield, we're all there, almost. So reviewing as of the end of March, this is for a different period than the other statements you received, so this is as of the end of March, quarters of the year. Overall, we're looking at total cash dispersalence for the period of about one point five six million, and the amount of expenses impacted on the financials at one point four. This will not total all of the expenses for Ridgefield. I'm still receiving invoices as we speak. And it does not also include, let's call it phase two, and that is the data center that needs to be completed in the back of the area that we are leasing, as well as a training room, which is a large one, that also needs to be completed. So those will be additional expenses that you will see in this, this year as far as Ridgefield is concerned. So this is not close of the chapter simply because the administrative offices have them. Questions? I will not go through dashboards extensively, except for going through two, which I believe are most significant. And here I'm going to the Medicaid current ratio, and this is, on the Medicaid program, I'm only talking about revenue over expense. So it's a ratio of how much revenue you have for the expenses incurred for the period, and that stands at two point four nine, which is a healthy place to be. The reason I bring up the current ratio a lot is the fact of the matter is we are a cash business, meaning our responsibilities are not only to provide financial services for those who are IDG as well as on the mental health side of things, but to fund service providers and provision services to others. Cash comes in, cash goes out. It's more important to have it come in so you can pay for what goes out. So the cash part of what we do is significant and important, so I'll always review that with the board. As far as total current revenue, meaning turn, total current ratio, meaning from all sources of funds, that stands at three point five five. The other dashboard I would review is actually the one that was just added last month, or perhaps the month before. It's literally the final page of the dashboard measures, and it's called a defensive interval. I think I briefly reviewed what the defense interval was last time, but I'll do it once again. And that is looking at what on average we have to pay out in terms of the Medicaid program on a day-to-day basis. How long will the cash last if you currently have available to us to pay out our obligations? So you would measure it in terms of number of days. So it currently stands at seventy-eight point six three days, which is extraordinary. That is a big increase over sixty-four point six two, which was for the last period that I reported to the board. The biggest difference there is as you decrease the accounts receivable, you increase cash. So it's a big difference in cash, which is unusual. It is a blip, and it significantly affects this ratio, but this is a public base. Questions in terms of the defensive interval or any of the other dashboards that may keep someone's attention?
Sorry, did you say that when you were discussing current ratio and liquidity, did you mention that we have a target current ratio? And how we're performing with respect to?
Actually, there is a, how to say this, a contractual responsibility that we have to maintain, and that is that it's greater than one to one, and that it cannot fall below that ratio for any longer than three consecutive months. That is actually a provision within our GMA contract, and we would have to hold for us very quickly if those ratios fall already significantly.
Here's a review that's provided every month that puts it ahead and it's a little bit, I think it's part of the piece of legislation this year, so. Literally, GMA monitors based on the month, month basis.
That's good. And we're performing very well with respect to that. What about, is profitability ratio important to us? And how do we balance that with access and care, right? So I mean, we could have great net income if it was inadequate access.
I'm going to push this in somewhat philosophical discussion, and you'll understand why I'm pushing it that way. For any nonprofit or governmental organization, what one would always want to see is that more income comes in the door than goes out. That has to be balanced with the mission of the organization itself and the responsible management of the funds received. So you would want on a healthy basis, always to see some margin present. Now, obviously, we own it just in the vacuum, so we get our revenue under the Medicaid program and other sources of funds within federal government and state government. And they are interested that services are provided and that we reasonably use the resources we have and mission that we get it. So the two have to be balanced. There's no ratio, there's no specific target per se, but we do have to be reasonable that we carry on our duties and responsibilities, expending responsibly the resources we have with margins that do not appear to be excessive. Am I starting to hear murmur rings? That would be an actual comment. And that comes from a sense of, we're receiving government funds to provide a service. What are your plans to do with this unrestricted fund balance that you have? The immediate response from any financial person like myself would be, well, hold on a second. This is new. Meaning we've just come under the web and we are just now developing an organization that I would consider to be financially sound. At this point, we perhaps had that discussion, but it certainly was not appropriate until this kind of fund reserve was built. So I guess in the future, there will be discussions in reference to what programmatic uses perhaps, and to what extent those unrestricted funds should be used for in the future.
Give you a different, related answer that's really pretty simple, and it's probably the best data to look at is the medical loss ratio. What's the percentage of money that's dedicated to services? Are we spending that services for ninety-eight percent? So that, you know, just a big, first big cut, that tells you a lot.
That's good. Thank you for that. You know, I know it's, I know it's a difficult thing. Do you, I was just wondering if the board had, for example, an operating margin target that it would use to create balance between fulfilling mission and needing or operating target? We need to have operating margins, you know, obviously that goes without saying, obviously for growth and sustainability and that kind of thing. But how much operating margin? And at what point do we start to question ourselves about whether there is adequate access? If the operating margin gets above whatever we set our target to be, that, that's where I was going with that. And I know it's a difficult thing to figure out, but to be honest with you, I was kind of assuming SMOKI had done that because SMOKI's pretty progressive. You know, and has always been really impressive.
I think the Medicaid loss ratio is as good a measure as any, there are obviously discussions about that. As promised, we also have to go through its labels, smoking at the center, FY fourteen fifteen. It's titled Avenue, and then there's a different section that talks about expenses. And these are the modifications of the budget for the period, and I'm losing here. On the revenue side, you will notice a, we're talking about these second column that says budget revisions for twenty-three fifteen. These are revisions that have occurred since the January twenty-second approval of the board. There's been in addition a transition to community levying of approximately five thousand dollars, which means additional consumers were added to the program, so additional resources were provided. The fund balance here, which is a reduction of three hundred thousand dollars, were funds that were transferred from fund balance into the operating fund as far as the Evergreen Foundation lawsuit was concerned. So these were monies appropriated from fund balance for that use. We have a resolution that's been resolved. So in a sense, this is taking those funds from the operating fund and putting it back into the fund balance. So that's what this is. This is a transfer. There is an addition here of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand in single string three-way hospitals. There are four hospitals that we see an increase. These are funds used for the uninsured on the behavioral health side that were added to the net. Under state non-UCR, this is a realignment of sixty-two thousand dollars. The grant that we received, which was two million dollars across a two-year period of time, was divided into two sections. One was state, the other was federal. The state portion is labeled here as community-based crisis state, non-UCR, and that is for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this is for the C three, three fifty-six project. A hundred and three thousand was added to child mental health, federal UCR. It was a reduction under women's alcohol treatment for federal UCR, two hundred and seventy thousand. Going down the line, there was a decrease in major funds, an increase in adult MH homeless, the APP program. A decrease as far as child MH, I can't even pronounce that word right now. An increase as far as the work first program of sixty thousand dollars. A reduction as far as the adult women's federal treatment, non-UCR. An increase in urgent care, this is a federal portion, and this is for four hundred and forty-eight thousand, which adds up to just under. which adds up to just under a million when both sources were considered. Strategic prevention framework, an addition of a hundred and sixty six. So that sum totals for all of these changes is an increase of one point six million dollars, summarizing here to annual budget of three hundred and sixty six thousand, five hundred and fifty seven dollars, and five hundred and sixty seven and one hundred and forty And that's on the revenue side. On the expense side, these are major budget categories that are summarized, so there's several accounting lines that fit between each one of these. Total personnel services of thirty three thousand, seven hundred and thirty, supplies, materials of fifty three thousand, three hundred and forty, total current obligations of seven hundred and twenty one thousand. These are overwhelmingly associated with the Bluefield project. Certain fixed charges of a hundred and fifty three thousand, capital outlays of forty seven, and total capital out, total contracted services of seven hundred and twelve thousand, balancing out the other part of the accounting is one point six million. Any questions in terms of the budget provisions for the period? That being said, the does lead to the motion vote that you accept it to the financial report, and the budget provisions ask.
Well, no, I was just going to say that the finance committee recommends the adoption of the financial.
Is that your motion? Is there that? Okay. Any other discussion about financial matters? All the flag will say aye. Okay. Pass it down.
Mr. Chair, the finance committee recommends the approval of the budget.
All the flag will say aye. Thank you. Thank you, Bert. With the performance and quality committee.
Sure enough, I'd be very grateful. Performance and quality committee, that is free, and review the performance improvement grid, the E D H S report, and L M E M C O comparison, for the quality reports, tells the consumer perception of care report. Just summarize, the majority of those, by saying, one of the concerns that we continue to look at each month is E D and hospital admissions events and so forth. In addition, overall, we still have occasional concerns about lack of continuity, or lack